7:04, call meeting to order. Mrs. Thompson, if you please, do this in flag of allegiance.
We declare, United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
With record show, Mr. Dowd is absent on our board. All of the other board members are present. Mr. Board, has public notice been given?
Public notice has been given. There was a correction to the agenda earlier this morning due to a clerk layer.
On to public comment. Career policies 0167.3. Anyone wishing to participate in the period of public comment must be a resident of the regional school district, the parent or legal guardian of an enrolled district student or an enrolled district student. Persons wishing to participate must be physically present at the meeting and must register in advance. A total time allotted in 30 minutes will be given for public comments. Each participant shall be given three minutes to address the board. Speakers not permitted to make inflammatory comments, use inappropriate language or gestures, attack specific persons, or make a specific person the subject of their remarks. Please see policy 0167.3 for a complete list of requirements and restrictions. If a person is unable to adhere to these rules, they may be directed to end their comments. Mrs. Coleman?
No.
Thank you. Public comment regarding policy 5411, third grade promotion and retention.
All right, this is on, at the last board meeting, the board saw a proposal for a new policy as a result of Act 20, the reading here in Wisconsin. This is a policy that's being introduced as a result of that. Our policies say that whenever the board introduces a new policy or before it can accept a new policy, a few things must happen. First, it must be introduced to the board through information. That was done at our July 16 meeting. And then the second thing is that an opportunity for concerned groups or individuals have an opportunity to react to that policy, and that is what this time is dedicated for, anyone who wants to react to the proposed policy 5411, third grade promotion and retention.
Mrs. Coleman, did you get any submissions to speak on the 5411?
I did not.
Thank you. To reports, the district administrator's report.
Okay, so just a couple of dates. Even though it's the end of July here, we've got a couple of dates here in August. August 11th, we will be back or continue on our Monday board meeting, so that will be our next board meeting. We will plan on taking a new board picture on that date, so dress appropriately. Ms. Stoltz will get a picture likely right after open is complete. That following night, Tuesday, August 12th, this is our super-registration night for our families. Board members are welcome to attend if they would like to do so. It goes from 1 till 7. We'll have some food trucks, opportunity for the board just to be generally available to the public. And then our committee meetings will be that next night on Wednesday, August 13th. So those are some upcoming dates that the board needs to be aware of. And then finally, just a reminder to our public, you'll hear it again during the referendum update as well, but regional center high school referendum bids for any local vendors or vendors that are interested in putting in a bid for that are due this Thursday, December, excuse me, December. This Thursday is July 31st, so July 31st will be when the referendum bids are due. Any questions from the board on any of those dates? Super, thank you.
Board member reports. Then on to the achievement gap reduction, AGR, your end report.
Okay, so Dr. Johnson has a report video included in here. This information was also presented in her absence at the curriculum meeting, but all of the information is there. There are a couple of different PDFs to show the actual data for AGR or the achievement gap reduction. Essentially, the achievement gap reduction is an attempt to reduce the quote-unquote "gap" between the learning outcomes for socioeconomic challenged families versus non-low-income families, okay? We're trying to reduce that gap, making sure that all students are learning at the same pace. So that information is there. Hopefully, you got a chance to watch the video. Dr. Johnson is here. If you have any questions for her regarding the information that she saw and, again, curriculum, feel free to add anything that you might have heard at the committee meetings. But any questions?
The one thing that I had is we tend to focus on the negative side of things. What were some positives that you saw, some trends that came out of this last report?
A couple of positive things I saw. One was our kindergarten at the end of the year was almost at 100% in reading, and that's a big deal. That's a foundation that's laid, and that's a strong one. And then the second one I would say is, if you remember, we adopted two new curricula this last year, and to see that no one flatlined is great. That's always a positive. We're having strong impacts with the new curriculum, and we'll only see that get better.
Thank you.
Thank you, and thank you, Dr. Johnson, for the information provided.
To the minutes, is there a motion to approve the prior meeting minutes of July 16th? So, 2025, motion made by Mr. Billian, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Mrs. Sharp, discussion? Mr. Billian?
Aye.
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 Aye. And to financial items, the approval of statement of cash and invoices.
I move that we approve the statement of cash dated July 24, 2025, and approve community first bank general checking accounts, checks number 87424-87451, ACH number 252603462-252603497, EFT number 202400200-20250003, the net total of $502,931.51. The purpose, this is for the purpose of general operating costs of the district.
Motion was made by Mr. Miller, is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Troxell, Mr. Basworth, anything you want to point out or add?
Yeah, a couple of things to add tonight. The format looks just a little bit different because it's, right, has one fiscal year's ending and another one is starting, so it takes a little bit of extra sorting, so that looks just a little bit different to you than normal. And right on the first page is a couple of larger dollar values that I'll explain. The second one there, $18,300 to Bethany Williams Church, that's the rent, for you to I thrive academy for the next 12 months. And then a little bit, four or five down there, Flores Insurance Company, $11,892. We pay an estimation of what we're going to need to cover our workers' compensation insurance, and then as the fiscal year ends, they do an audit to see how close we were, and sometimes it's refunds, sometimes we owe a little bit more. This year, we owe another $11,000.
There's been a motion and a second, any discussion? Mrs. Sharp?
Aye.
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 Mrs. Coleman, consent agenda items?
Motion to approve the consent agenda items as presented. Motion to approve the hiring of Daniel Makhavich as an alternate alternative education teacher for the 2025-26 school year as presented. Motion to approve the student handbook for the high charter school for the 2025-26 school year as presented. Motion to accept the recommendation from the personnel negotiations and budget development committee to accept the proposal to create the job description for a behavioral technician as presented, effective immediately. Motion to approve two open enrollment out applications for the 2025-26 school year as presented, and to deny five open enrollment in applications due to space slash resource limitations for the 2025-26 school year, and to approve the district administrator to approve or deny alternative open enrollment applications prior to going to the school board from now through September 19, 2025, to allow students to start school immediately without waiting for the next board meeting. That is it.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items? So moved. Motion made by Mr. Billian, is there a second?
I'll second.
Ms. Troxell, Mr. Gordon, anything you want to call out or add?
Yeah, I would like to just clarify for the board and the public specifically regarding 7E, the open enrollment request. If you remember, last January, the board, as most boards across the state, they review their space and resource limitations in their special education programs. That is done in January. We determined we do not have space in most of our special education rooms. And while it's difficult to deny students that are wanting to come to our district, we do have to do a thorough review of every open enrollment request that has an IEP attached to a special education student, and we have to determine whether or not we have the space and the resources available for them. And if we don't, and it's going to cost the district more money, for instance, if we have a special education student coming in that requires a one-to-one aid, that would require additional resources or perhaps even another teacher because the space capacities in that room are already at a max. That gives the school district the ability to deny those students. Again, so while it's difficult to deny, that is the reason why we're denying. We just don't have the resources available under our current configuration for these five students, and it would cost us additional funding in order to have them attend. So that's, I just wanted to give that clarification. The board approved those limitations back in January, and that's the reason for denying these five. Any questions, Alton? I guess I'll turn it back over to you for discussion.
You have a motion and a second, any discussion? Mrs. Thompson?
Aye.
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 I'll make the motion. We approve the modified agenda, is there a second?
I'll second that.
Second by Mrs. Sharp, discussion? Mr. Miller?
Aye.
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 To information and discussion items, district vacancies and appointments.
Okay, so just a few moments ago, the board approved the hiring of an alternative education teacher, so that position is filled. That leaves us with seven positions that are still open. Five of them are in the interview process. That interview process can be in the very early stages. We're just closed, and we're reviewing the applicants and haven't actually even made any phone calls for interviews. All the way through, we are in the middle of or have recently conducted interviews and are ready to make an offer, but those five positions are in that process. And then we have two positions that are still open. We have the drug-free communities project coordinator open that has been posted for quite some time. We are still looking for applicants, and as soon as we get a nice pool, if we get a nice pool, then we will go through that interview process. And then the second is the behavioral tech position. The board just recently approved that job description and consent agenda, and so that position will be posted, and the number of applicants, or excuse me, the number of positions that we fill for that will depend on how many students actually end up in the I thrive program. So that is targeting a one-to-one for that. So there will likely be multiple openings for that, but that will be posted here in the near future. Otherwise, again, all of the certified admin exempt and non-exempt staff are on the left under the black column on the left, and then the support staff and co-curricular positions are on the right-hand side under a blue header, included in your memo. Any questions from the board regarding that? Thank you.
Referendum projects update.
Okay, so pictures tell a thousand words, so in a second here, Mr. Jones and I will tag team, me and Mr. Jones will be doing most of it, but we will be giving you some pictures that we can share with you, but I just want to generally just give a couple of high-level things. Once again, our high school project, the design phase is complete. It went out for bid early in July, I believe right after the Fourth of July. It's been out for bid. Those bids are due on July 31st, this Thursday. So any vendors, okay, we have a lot of local vendors, and I say a lot, half dozen or so local vendors that during the primary school or intermediate school phase asked, I didn't know about it, how can I bid? Now's the opportunity for them. We've let them all know the high school bid is going to be out there. Now it is. We've made contact with all of them, got them on the bid list, but just, again, board members, if you communicate with anybody over the next 72 hours, let them know that if they are interested in bidding any part of the high school project, they can get on our website, go to the referendum page, and then there is a vendor inquiry where they can fill out a form and get added to that list, and obviously, it'll be a quick turnaround at this point because specs are out there and folks are bidding. So that's point number one. Then, in your memo, just kind of a very quick timeframe, so we began construction at the primary school. There's a little bit of construction going on at the intermediate school. Mr. Jones and I will talk you through that. That started immediately after students and staff left in June. Upcoming here, early August, we'll be laying some blacktop asphalt for the parking lot at the intermediate school, excuse me, at the primary school. That's when that site is going to really start to take shape. They've got a lot of curb and gutter that have already been poured for the outline of that, but the asphalt will be late here in early August, I believe, right around August 6th or the 8th, and then that has to cure for seven to 10 days. Nothing can drive on it during that time. That means that our staff will not be allowed to park and allowed access to the primary school until the first day of in-service on the 19th. So Mrs. Hardy has communicated with those staff members, they will not have the same flexibility that other staff members have regarding using their, those flexible days to get into their classroom that the other buildings have. They do have an opportunity, but they would have to walk to the site, park at a nearby lot, and then gain access to it, and obviously, it has to be not under construction anymore. There are some rooms that have been turned back over to the district, but a lot of it's still undergoing construction. Expected to have all of that done on or before Labor Day, which is September 1st. Our students start on September 2nd. They are on time with everything. We are still waiting for a major piece of equipment, that is the switch gear. They estimated a 13-month lead time that was approved by the board way back last summer, and it is scheduled to ship on, I believe, August 12th. Does that sound right, Mr. Jones? So it was the full 13 months, and obviously, our HVAC is dependent on that, so that's a key component that we're waiting on, which means that air conditioning and climate control in the building might be September 2nd, 3rd, 4th, somewhere right in there. We will have it, it will be there, but it might not be on day one. So the forecast for September 2nd through the 4th calls for very cool conditions, so we're hoping that that comes to fruition. And then there's a little bit of work being done at the intermediate school, specifically the new restroom addition on the south end of the building near the gym. They've got the plumbing and the infrastructure in. Again, you'll see some pictures here momentarily. That restroom will be completed early this fall, end of September, early October, and then once that's completed and opened up so our students can use it, then they will start systematically shutting down other restrooms to renovate that during the school year. But we need to have that one complete in order to stay up to code for the number of restrooms available for our students during that time. And then the last piece, the primary school that needs to be completed is the 5K, those four classrooms that have the sinking foundation that was being pulled away from our wall, pulled away from our rafters. Again, you'll see pictures of where we're at with that. We're looking at a January 1 completion for that, crossing our fingers, maybe it'll get done a little sooner, but that's what we're aiming for as it sits right now, and then once that gets completed, the primary school will be complete. And again, as I mentioned, throughout '25, '26, the intermediate school systematically restrooms will be shut down for renovation. And then the rest of the intermediate school, along with almost all of the high school, that'll be scheduled for the summer of 2026. So as soon as school gets out, those renovations will start happening, including HVAC at the intermediate school, so that they will have to live one more year without the climate control of air conditioning. So any questions on that before Mr. Jones and I showed you some pictures? Again, you're welcome to ask questions throughout, but any general questions on the timeline or what's happening as it sits right now? Okay, since I can now stand up and walk, I'm willing to do that. So we have, I don't know, there's probably 2025 pictures in here. It's mostly in chronological order. I'm going to use Mr. Jones to certainly help out because he knows the ins and outs. I'll try to introduce pictures as I know them, but you'll see the date stamps over here on the left. Again, they started this on June 9th, so this is taken just about a week after. You can see how much work they got done from the 9th just now, but when we're talking about the bad soil and the soil corrections that needed to happen at the primary school, it was much more extensive and exhaustive than what they thought it was going to be. This black dirt here, this is the bad soil. This is at the end of the kindergarten classrooms where the corner of the classrooms will be, furthest away from our main building, and this is where it's sinking, and this soil correction needed to be done throughout, the foundation here as well as in the apartment lot. Mr. Jones, how far down did they have to go?
12 foot, they had to go down 12 foot in this area. There's other areas that didn't have to go that extensive, but for most of that kindergarten area, they had to go down 12 foot.
A lot of jerky excavating is doing the renovations as far as the landscaping, and there's just a lot of bad soil that needs to be replaced. That changeover will come through the board, and we get the actual final bill for that, but it was much more expensive. We're talking probably $200,000 in addition to what was anticipated regarding soil corrections. This is the soil that they're talking about, and this is at the corner of what will eventually be the new addition. So this is where the four kindergarten classrooms were, okay? So this is the, you'll see this green wall in a lot of these pictures, and just to get kind of a point of reference, this would be at the end of the primary school, looking to the north, and again, this would have been where the four classrooms were. Two of them came out right here, and then two of them came out down here, and this would have been the hallway leading down to the apartment, for instance. All right, still around that same June, middle of June, adding the plumbing here, underground plumbing for the restrooms here at the primary school. You'll see a before and after picture. This is the before, this is the starting of the removal of the ceiling tiles in the gymnasium at the primary school, along with whatever fixtures.
That stuff worked. It wasn't close with what I, it was kind of a box up there, but it's similar with this here. So that's going to, that's torn out, and there will be exposed artwork in there now.
Very similar to what our high school has for exposed artwork events. Again, you'll see the drywall ceiling a little bit later on. This is a cement pad. You'll see a little bit here, the installation of the air handlers. We have two air handlers coming in here. This is one of the cement pads. It has to be raised up off of the chemical floor, so that's why they've got the additional concrete there for each of the, I don't want to say chilvers, just the air.
The air handlers, they raise it up so it's a stable environment for it, and then if they, somewhere along the way, spring a leak, water flows away from it, doesn't collect to the bottom of it.
This is the IMC at the primary school, kind of get your variance here. This is that little sunken corner where they do a lot of reading. They're pulling up the carpets. Again, there'll be a lot of pictures with the IMC. The IMC is in full renovation, wound up very similar to the high school here with new decor furniture in addition to ceiling tile, painted walls, carpeting, and everything. Again, here's that green wall, so this is the footing that they're digging down to get the foundation footings for the new classroom additions, it's not the right word, replacements, I guess. Steel studs throughout, so this is the wet wall between the boys and girls restroom at the primary school, and the plumbing that they're adding. Again, you'll see some before and after pictures as they go through the renovations of the restrooms.
I believe that's on the newer end of the building. I guess it is.
Newer end?
Yes.
Replacing lighting throughout all of our buildings, so the primary school, there's all of the lighting fixtures, certainly all of them in the classrooms, they're all LEDs. These light fixtures are just a little over an inch thick. They weigh about three pounds, super efficient, super daylight, 500, 5,000 Kelvin lights, so really, really good light, and it's all dimmable and controllable in each classroom. So that in combination to the windows that you'll see here a little bit, the window replacement, even though they're the same size, the amount of light and obstruction is just changed immensely, lower obstruction and more light. Again, getting ready for the footings, they're getting the, this is right next to the current building, footings with rebar.
Mr. Jones, were there issues with the footings in the beginning? Sort ended up being more extensive than what was originally planned, or was it when that came about, when they dug into it, it actually was kind of as they expected?
I would say it's more than what they expected.
The soil will spread more, you know, so when we've got our bus lanes on parking lot now in order to accommodate that, that's when you went down there, if you happen to go down there in late June and early July, and they had all that rock, and they're trying to pack everything down, that's what they're trying to do, get rid of that bad soil where heavy driving, especially buses are going to be parked and driving in addition to the foundation for the classrooms.
Thank you.
More soil than concrete. Same view, so the camera, the green wall is right behind the camera footage photo. Looking down here again, this is where two of the classrooms entered, this is where the other two entered, getting the site prepped for the splitters. We're now getting into the end of June, June 25th, again, the wet wall in between where all the plumbing goes and between the bathrooms. Now starting to get some insulation of some things, so this is the concrete pad that you saw earlier, same room. This is the air handler that it sits on. This is the smaller of the two, correct?
This is the smaller of the two, and this will feed the gym.
Or is the other one will feed the rest of the building?
The other one will feed the 90 addition when we're in, and there's a third one we put in '16 that will feed the 98 addition.
Again, here's the restroom, so now they've got the walls, the steel stud walls insulated. They're starting to put up the back doors where the tile will go. See the plumbing fixtures coming out. We're now into early July. This is looking out over the new parking lot. Again, soil, bad soil, correct me if I'm wrong, Brian, but kind of went from the footer, the footers, the new addition is over here, and that bad soil kind of racks around. And that bad soil kind of racks around and gets into this area, which is right where those buses are going to be parked.
Right.
And that's really where it was much more expensive.
Right.
Underground electrical being put in. This could be near the gazebo, between the gazebo and the building is where this is added in the primary school.
The transformer will sit on top of that.
This is that IMC that we were pulling up carpet with. They hooked it up, all the tile and stuff and all the electrical and wiring above the This is down really towards the south end, towards the park down there, right, kind of right in between where the back goes, I don't know what you call that thing, and where the driver sits. That's where the exit will be of the parking lot, for buses and parents. So it'll be significantly further south than where they, where they.
This is also right in area where there will be a retention bond.
So it will then be all the cheatering, all the water from the parking lot into there and feed it to the river. Let's see, this was taken on July 9th. This is the ceiling grid. At this point, all the green area is installed at this point. And I believe as it sits today, all of the grid is complete or maybe just a tiny bit left.
Pretty close.
Tiny, tiny bits.
And all these rooms in the green here are where in there cleaning those art crews are
Moving over to the intermediate school, there is some work there and then we'll hop back and forth between the two. This is the IMC at the intermediate school. This is the demolition of all of the shelves. Again, the line IMC coming in at the intermediate school as well. There was, once they got all of the shelving removed and started to lift up this carpet, they did find some asbestos in there and so there was some abatement that's needing to take place. I believe that is happening this week. This is in the old tech ed room. It's currently space that's being used for OT and PT, occupational physical therapy. It will continue to be used for that space. At least that's the plan for the 25, 26 school year, but there are some renovations happening and there are some, a little bit of that space is being taken away. I think the very next picture shows that floor plan. We just couldn't jump ahead one more. Okay, so this is if you were walking in, this is the intermediate school, walking in from the gym or to the gym. Here's the vestibule. Here's the gym, the gym commons, okay? And this is where the new restroom will be. So what you're going to see here, and I'll back up here a second, is they're gonna cut into the tile, into the cement, run the plumbing underground and then, and then re-put the cement back on to lay the groundwork for this new restroom here at the intermediate school. And again, once that restroom is complete, then that will be accessible to students and staff. And then the other restrooms will start to be shut down systematically. This is the old tech ed room, which is now kind of OT and PT. And these rooms right here, you can see my cursor, these are being added or taken away from that, that room. So we will have a toilet accessible here for our OT, PT, or if this space becomes something else, or for a changing room for officials if games are held in the gym. And then there's going to be a storage room for chairs. And then they are also going to block off, there's a fuse panel right here along this wall. There'll be a door access to this and then this is access to the mezzanine area. So in order to keep students out of the mezzanine, that will be a lockable door just for the staff. Okay? And this is the hallway looking down to where the restrooms will sit here in the back. And I'll back up here. Here's, here's what they're gonna dig up. You'll see photos here in just a little bit. And then that restroom will sit right down in here with a couple of rooms here, chair storage, and then restroom right off the hallway here. Give or take. Is there anything to bring up? Okay, back to the primary school and again, jumping forward here just to stay chronological. This is the one addition to the entire district where they're actually adding space. And this is essentially a mechanical room that's added. I don't know the exact dimension, but it is about 20 by 12 or something like that, maybe a little bigger. This will be pumping, go ahead, it'll be pumps and electrical.
I'll have the chiller pumps where the two guys are standing. Right, there's gonna be a chiller that sits out there and a generator. It'll have the switch gear for the generator and it'll have the switch gear for the chiller and the pumps for the chiller, plus a bunch of other electrical.
And this will be attached on the backside of this photo here where that column is. This will be where those four 5K classrooms are. We've got the foundation wall built and we're just backfilling it from July 11th. Starting to install the drywall in the gymnasium. So we got all the tile down, got that. You can see the outline here where that wooden box was sitting there, that, that port, I can remember that was there, is now gone, with the drywall. This is the ceiling grid down the corridor.
It's the 1980 section, the old section of the building.
Again, they're, they're pretty much out of the, the gridwork now for the ceiling.
So that, that's all in now and we have most of those rooms cleaned already to wax.
Here's a look from the outside of the new windows. So these old windows have several more vertical, I think they're called styles in here. A little bit more obstructive view from the inside. It just looks like a, it just looks like a much bigger window, even though it's the same footprint. Now, middle of July here, this is the intermediate school. So this is the corner. This is the trophy case that you can see down the hallway. This is where the new bathrooms will be. So this was the work that they're doing and looking at that, right here where it's highlighted, this is the plumbing that will be fed in the new gymnasium or in the new restrooms by the gymnasium.
So those pipes, that sanitary sewer is going out. We have to run it around to the backside of the building to connect to the city sewer.
Here's where they cut to make that happen. They'll then back into the concrete here, again, this is the intermediate school. Intermediate school. This is the single user restroom. So if I back up here, this is this restroom that is had right here for this. Let's see, this is at the IMC at back at the primary school. So we get the grid work back in and the library space there. This is the bigger air handler. This is just a piece of it, 4,000 pounds.
Yes.
And a couple of pieces that are attached.
Quite a few little pieces. So we had to take out three sets of doors to get that in the building, frames and everything to get it through.
Let's see, we're up to just about 11 days ago now. This is on the 17th of June. Here's the drywall taking and muddying here in the gymnasium. So this will all be finished. Again, the entire gymnasium will be painted, acoustical panels added. Getting into just last week, a week ago now, this will be where they're going to do the light holes for the parking lot and starting the light hole bases. Some rebar there. This is facing the building, standing in one of the new kindergarten classrooms are where it will be. And there's a bunch of pipes coming out, Brian, go ahead.
So the big pipes are the supply pipes for the chiller. Smaller pipes are the return lines. So those pipes going to that new addition, they'll come on and they go over to the pumps.
In that new room. This is from the parking lot, all the soil corrections have been done now. They've got the mat laid and they're starting to fill it back in. This is at the intermediate school now. This is along the gym. Mr. Jones mentioned that sewer having to come off around.
So this is the stormwater leg of it. So all that water that comes off the roof that shoots out about halfway to quarters of way up that roof, you see little white pipes sticking out. They're gonna connect those so they go into a drainage tunnel, so the building will be longer.
Could be nice. What I've heard, this is a sanitary.
Ah, this is more, this is the sanitary line going to our bathroom.
I mentioned earlier asphalt will be coming, but they're installing the concrete curb. So this portion of it is on the backside in that southwest corner of the parking lot towards the river. And the entire parking lot is getting prepped even just in the last couple of days. It's much more closer to grade and ready for, for asphalt.
That's all of that, that's the playground area on the flat type.
You can see the restrooms. This is the girls' bathroom. It's continually renovated, tile throughout, ordering, new fixtures throughout. I believe one of the next ones is the boys'. This is what this, lights are on. All of the classrooms and then the ceiling tiles are starting to be put in. It's part of the IMC at the primary school and the carpet. I believe they're almost done with it. That should be completed in the next 24 hours, maybe, maybe Wednesday afternoon. And then we're working with Denko and trying to get the furniture installed accordingly. Boys' bathroom, similar pile and look and feel. Also be a very kind of look through all our, our restrooms here in the, in the three buildings as they do the renovations. And there's just a couple of photos with that concession stand and the fire. So that's some socket removal here. This is cleaning out the interior rooms.
This is the girls' restroom.
Girls' restroom?
Yes.
So that's what they've been working on a lot here, the Christians have been here cleaning this out, ripping down the ceilings, hoping to get the rough crusts off here later this week, who will have arrived here today. So the concession stand, the light. I think that's it. I think it's those pictures through last, on a Wednesday or Thursday throughout and getting what it was on. I've really done a deep dive into really what progress is going to need and I wanted to share with the board. Any questions on the referendum or projects that are going on regarding the referendum , Brian, or anything? Okay, thank you for your patience and move on. Back to you as president.
All right. Onto the board development, part 404, Roberts' Rules of Order and Other Board Procedures.
If you want to sit there or do whatever you feel comfortable. If you want to set a table, if you bring a lighter pole, if you want to change. Okay, well, yeah.
How do I, how do I move this slide?
Okay, maybe not.
Maybe not.
Yeah.
Ah, there we go.
Okay, and now we gotta get back.
Maybe I'll go to the laptop after all.
Yeah, that'd be so easy. Let's do it. Let's do this. Oh, we just use those arrows right there?
Yeah, the keyboard.
Okay.
Do you want to introduce the?
Yes, I will, yes.
Thank you, Steve.
You got it, thank you. All right, so the board has heard three different, last three board meetings, we've got three different board developments. This is the fourth of four. We wrote this down as a kind of the first and last, where we're talking about procedural and how things work from a legal standpoint. We brought our general legal counsel, Kirk Strang, his executive parent legal, Rebecca Stigler in here for that. He was here the first time. And then those middle two, we brought the folks from Sun Prairie in to talk about a rule of governance, okay? And so kind of the four of them together, trying to really give our board some tools, proper best practice as well as things to think about and how they want to govern as a school board. So again, this will be the last part of it, our fourth of our four-part mini-series. And this will be specifically revolving around Roberts' Rule of Order, which is what the board uses as its order of operations at a board meeting. Mr. Strang will get into just general protocols that relates to board meetings. So I think that this is going to be a good culmination of a really good four-part series. So with that, I'll turn it over to our general legal counsel, Mr. Kirk Strang. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Superintendent. Is the mic picking me up right now, okay?
Yeah.
All right, all right, good. I just haven't used anything in front of me. This is the first time with all of it, so hopefully it'll work okay. Well, let's dive right in. We have a lot of material to cover. As the superintendent indicated, I'm Kirk Strang, the general counsel to the district. On my right, your left is my executive parent legal, Rebecca Stigler. And tonight's topic is, of course, Roberts' Rules. But we talked about this beforehand and talked about some of the meeting issues that should be interspersed in the discussion of Roberts' Rules. And that will take us a little bit into policy, a little bit frankly, into custom and ordinary practice. And then, of course, we'll, we'll have some legal authority to cover as well. The first thing we put in the materials for you is your own policy. So your policy on parliamentary authority is to be governed by Roberts' Rules and to have Roberts' Rules guide your board meetings. There is, of course, a very important caveat in the materials that you have, and that is any failure to comply with Roberts' Rules is not going to affect the validity of any order or any disposition that the board makes. And I have always encouraged that to be part of the policy. I still do. I think it's important that from a legal standpoint, the board not be in a position where if there are minor insignificant technical issues, that that somehow affects the overall legal validity of action the board has taken. Even under the open meetings law, when there is a violation of the open meetings law, an action is voidable but not necessarily void. The court will account for the public interest in having the order of the board or the disposition of the board stand and whether there's any prejudice to the public in intervening and invalidating the action that's been taken. So I think generally speaking, our law defers to making sure that the practical reality is realized, that what you intend to do and what you voted to do ends up being the rule of the game. When we look at board policy, a couple of other points that I should make is you have over the years, and I've been here some time as your general counsel, you've acquired certain customs and practices that you use in board meetings that are effective. They have stood the test of time and they've been preferred ways of doing things. I do think it's important to pay attention to those and preserve those traditions because of the fact they work and they seem to work for the people it's most important to, namely the members of the board themselves. We'll get into it in a little more detail, but of course, if we were formally following Roberts' Rules of Order, the person who is the presiding officer would recognize a member of the board and ask them to rise to be heard. They would then rise to be heard as if they were in parliament. And then after they had the floor, they would be heard and the president would resume authority over the meeting once they've had a chance to say what they were recognized to say. Clearly, there isn't a school board in the state that's following that level of formality, even though everybody has adopted Roberts' Rules as a general guide for their meetings. So there are customs and prevailing practices that are normal for any school board and certainly our board is no exception. So getting into the meat of the matter a little bit, first of all, roll call votes are not technically required for every type of vote by statute. So our state law does allow for voice voting and Roberts' Rules actually calls for, in many instances, voice voting where the presiding officer will acknowledge a call of the a's and nays. However, under board policy, or I should say board custom, there is a recognized practice of roll call voting, motions that come before the board, because it's much easier to have minutes that comply with the law when we roll call vote, because it's easier to record how each individual board member has voted. And that, of course, is part of our law when it comes to creating accurate minutes that record what the board did accurately. So a presiding officer, under your custom and under generally recognized policy, can call for an individual member's vote in his discretion or by using a random selection procedure in terms of the order in which individuals are called upon. Certainly, we can always appreciate that in a board with a fixed number, a seven-member board, individuals voting in different points in the sequence are always going to be aware of how many votes have already been cast, how they've been cast, and how that can influence voting or behavior. And so there is a natural tendency as well as a custom for rotating or moving around how those orders are conducted in order to make or moving around how those orders are conducted in order to make sure that there's no unfair advantage or advantage in voting in a particular place. That's observational on my part, that's not really a mandate of Roberts Rules, but it's how you've applied it in your case. In Roberts Rules, and again, we'll get even more technical in a minute, often there's a call for a's and nays, and then there's recognition of a member of the body who's asking for a roll call vote. We, of course, have more of a tradition of roll call voting here in order to have legally compliant minutes, but we also do so because under the open meeting law, there must be a roll call vote before going into closed session in order to ascertain the vote of any individual member. That's how we have to go to go into closed session under the open meeting law, and that'll be another allowance we make. When we're looking at how to apply Roberts Rules, we're never going to apply it in a way that violates the open meetings law, so of course, that's going to come first. So here are a few things about inquiries. A board member may need to make inquiries or requests for a variety of reasons during a meeting. Well, how do you do that under Roberts Rules? Well, there can be any number of inquiries, and I've listed a few for you here, parliamentary inquiries, and we'll go into each of these in some detail, requests for information, requests to read papers, those are always very interesting to manage because one wants to know exactly how long that paper is before somebody starts reading, if you're the presiding officer, a request for permission to withdraw or modify a motion, or for any other privilege. Those are some of the things that a board member can raise on their own as part of Roberts Rules, and we'll talk a little bit about each of them. First of all, a parliamentary inquiry, that's really to get procedural information. When a board member wants to know something about how we apply Roberts Rules to the particular case at hand, or how we run a board meeting on procedure, and that question will normally be directed to the board president, who's the presiding officer. And as you can see, an example of how that would occur under Roberts Rules is there would be a request by member A who would rise for parliamentary inquiry. I'm not sure any of us have seen that at a school board meeting, but Roberts Rules seems to say that's what might happen. And then the chair says the member will state the inquiry, and then the member will say what the question is. It's now the time for us to move the previous question. Usually, in real life, of course, it's going to be, is this a good time to ask this? The board president will say, sure, go ahead, and they'll ask the question. So again, informality, but still with the spirit of Roberts Rules, is going to be the way most parliamentary inquiries are addressed. Same with request for information. The purpose of a request for information is different, however, than a parliamentary inquiry. When we have a parliamentary inquiry, the individual board member is seeking guidance on process, on procedure, on how Roberts Rules applies to the situation at hand. When we have a request for information, that's different. That is a request for factual information. Have we received the report from the principal? What was the enrollment at the intermediate school? Those are fact issues, not parliamentary issues, and if they're properly before the body, they can be asked about. And as often is the case, I have far more slides than minutes, and so you'll see me giving somewhat abbreviated treatment of each, but that's how that would come before the body, and these do have priority if there's nothing on the floor. So an individual can make sure to interject and ask their question, be recognized, and then hopefully have their question answered by the chair, or often the chair will defer to the superintendent or one of the other administrators in the room that has the information most close at hand. One thing I should say about this custom is more freewheeling discussions, of course, happen at almost any school board meeting, and the board here in the Richland School District is no exception. There's been something of an allowance and a tradition by pretty much every board president I've ever worked with to allow for a certain amount of back and forth among school board members when appropriate. And so we certainly have seen that to be kind of an open session part of the spirit of board meetings, and again, the board here historically has allowed for that kind of dialogue to be more free-flowing, and if at a certain point it's time to bring things back into line, the presiding officer can do so, and certainly a member of the board is free to point that out in the ways that we will discuss today. These don't require a second. The things we just talked about can be raised without anybody seconding that motion, they don't require a vote, they aren't debatable, so you're not raising a debatable issue or asking for debate to be had on the subject, and it's not something that's subject to reconsideration. It's getting parliamentary information from the parliamentarian, if different from the presiding officer, and from the presiding officer if there's no parliamentarian designated for the meeting. So those are things to remember about those two particular varieties of action on the part of an individual board member, because when we get into Roberts Rules, often there will be concern for, is this coming up the right way procedurally? These are things that individual board members are at liberty to raise in appropriate circumstances. Requests to read papers, it's an interesting one and one we rarely see, so I will just go through this in the most brief manner, but under Roberts Rules, board members and other members of bodies regulated by Roberts Rules are not permitted to simply start reading papers to the body. That's something they need permission for, and to get permission, the member should describe the written material they want to read aloud to support their position, and then state that they wish to read those materials if no one objects. If one or more board members object, then that request does have to be seconded and voted on and has to pass by a majority vote. If, on the other hand, there's no objection, at least under Roberts Rules, that individual can then go forth and read the paper to illustrate their point. Sometimes that can be a scholarly work that's supporting a matter of public policy that the board is considering. Sometimes that can be something that is part of the district's own literature, for example, a writing contest that a student has won that the board is proud of and would like to have heard at a board meeting. Those are examples of when a request to read papers out loud might come, sometimes for policy, sometimes for other reasons that are to encourage the group and to offer to the community some of the great things the district does. And that is how that is handled under Roberts Rules. Requests for permission to withdraw or modify a motion. Now, this is going to be a little different from requests for reconsideration or motions for reconsideration. That comes after the body has already passed something. But this is when we're still in that land of motions when nothing has passed the board. You can request permission to withdraw or modify a motion that you've made. So for example, if a board member makes a motion that they want immediately pulled because they thought of some reason why it shouldn't be presented at all or presented at that time, they can ask that they be permitted to withdraw it before it's been voted on. Excuse me, I should have brought some water with me, and I apologize for that, I know I sound a bit raspy. If that occurs, the same member can request permission to withdraw or modify their own motion, and the chair will ask if any board members object. Sometimes that's handled even more informally, where in the discretion of the chair, that request will simply be granted suis ponte, where the presiding officer will say, we haven't taken any action yet, if you want to withdraw your motion, you can. Normally, the procedure is only slightly different, there'll be a short moment to wait to see if there's an objection. I don't recall in any recent time, and for the school board here, I can never recall ever, seeing someone request to withdraw their own motion where somebody objected to it and wanted to force that motion to a vote instead. So it tends to be a very friendly kind of proposal, and usually there's no objection, but if there were, then the motion to withdraw would have to be put to a vote. Here's basically how motions work in general Roberts Rules. To make a motion, a board member first has to have the floor, so they have to be recognized by the presiding officer, and then the moving party can make a brief explanation about why they're going to offer the motion before offering that motion, nothing lengthy, just a brief statement of why they're making the motion. But Roberts Rules only permits a very brief discussion of the purpose of assisting in the wording of a motion if there's a need for any assistance in the wording of the actual motion. So you can make a brief explanation for why you're making a motion under Roberts Rules, but under Roberts Rules, and we'll get into this more strictly, oh, thank you so much, we'll get into this more, the more strict reading of Roberts Rules is involved when we're looking at discussion. In Roberts Rules, technically speaking, discussion doesn't happen until there's a motion and second first. So you have to have a motion and then a second, and then the floor is open for discussion. That is not this school board's way, nor is it the way of almost any other school board you'll see, because there's a need from a public policy standpoint for board members to be able to inform one another a little bit about why this is going to come into the board meeting for a motion, and so there's usually a certain amount of discussion that is allowed to take place before a call for a motion is even made. That's not a function of Roberts Rules, that's a function of good government, because board members want to be informed as much as possible about things before they have to take a position on what's before the body. So the way Roberts Rules is cut is, normally, that detail is not part of a pre-motion dialogue, but it will happen at a school board meeting in a different way because there's always going to be some level of discussion, unless it's something that has been well studied, it's been approved by committee, the board is well aware, the committee's worked through its packet, and then voting on the matter becomes more of a formality. But things that merit more policy discussion, there'll be discussion generally both before and after the motion. Here's a few categories to make sure everybody has at least a general discussion about the different types of motions we'll see. The main motion, of course, introduces the subject, so that is going to be what is put on the table for the board's consideration. A secondary motion is one that will come up while the main motion is pending, or at least it's one type of motion that will come up while the main motion is pending, and we have a few subcategories of those. Subsidiary motions are, for example, an amendment. So if a motion is on the floor, it's been moved and seconded, at some point in the discussion, there may be a need to amend that main motion, and that may be something that is contested, it may be something that, in the course of the discussion, most members of the board agree is a good change to make, and an amendment will be offered. That will be one of the subsidiary motions that can come up while a main motion is being considered. A privileged motion, that has to be presented immediately, even though it's unrelated to the main motion, and that will include privileged motions like a motion to adjourn. When a motion to adjourn is made, everything stops. Nothing else can be considered until that motion gets resolved first. So that's an example of a privileged motion that will take precedence under Roberts Rules. Then, of course, we have incidental motions, and those are more closely tied to the main motion themselves, things like a motion to suspend the rules, objections to considering the question being presented. Sometimes there'll even be a proposal to bifurcate the question into two parts so that we can handle the policy part first and the fiscal part second, for example. So you will occasionally see motions made to separate into two parts the main motion that is being presented, and that's an example for those who are keeping score of different categories of an incidental motion that'll come before the board. Seconding motion, supporting a motion isn't necessary to second it. We have some requirements in Roberts Rules where, when a board member takes some sort of a further action on the subject before the board, that is treated as support for that matter. That is not true when a motion is seconded. Seconding a motion does nothing more than bring the matter before the body, and if you want that question treated by the body, you can second the motion without binding yourself to vote on its behalf. There is some mythology out there for the proposition that if you second a motion, you're required, under Roberts Rules, to vote for it. That's a myth, that's just wrong. Roberts Rules doesn't require that, and somebody can second a motion and bring it before the board, and it's okay. Now, if members are slow to second a motion because the motion, for whatever reason, isn't getting an immediate response from the other members, the chair at some point can raise a point of order and let everyone know, by the way, if you're not seconding the motion, it's because it hasn't had a second yet. Or somebody can raise the point of order from the body of the board to bring that same matter before the body to point out it hasn't been seconded yet, because sometimes we'll have a situation where, for whatever reason, that seconding got lost in the shuffle, and people don't remember if it had a second or not. It's okay, it's easy to ask and find out, and nobody is going to be offending the rules by doing so. However, motions can die for lack of a second. Normally, the presiding officer, under Roberts Rules, is supposed to check and make sure that there isn't any willingness to second a motion, but if they check and there's still no second, at some point, they will kind of informally timeout. There's no clock being set, of course, it's within the discretion of the presiding officer to determine if there's just not the interest in pursuing that motion and to sell the rule. Stating the question is next on our subject, and the first item is debate, parliamentary name for any form of discussion. It doesn't have to connote disagreement. The term debate has different meanings, and under Roberts Rules, it does not suggest disagreement. Debate is simply discussion under Roberts Rules, and discussion is limited only as a means of keeping business on track. And after a motion's been made and seconded, the chair normally will place it before the board just by stating the question, indicating the motion is open to debate or discussion, and at that point, that's when Roberts officially, quote-unquote, authorizes that discussion to take place. In common practice, that discussion will have taken place for a period of time before that motion is raised, but once the motion and second has taken place, then Roberts Rules requires the presiding officer to call for discussion or debate. So if you haven't yet been heard after the motion and second has been made, you're entitled to be heard at that point, once the motion has been called. One common myth that I'd like to address, because I see it happen a lot, and I am not always asked to comment on it, but here, we don't have anything before the body, and I can offer my comment without being on anybody's side. That's a great place for a lawyer to be. So I'm gonna just share with you that there's a myth out there that somebody can simply stop debate by calling the question. You see somebody at school board meetings, or city council meetings, or village board meetings, who's just tired of hearing about it, and they say, Mr. President, I call the question. They really can't do that, okay? It's just something that, if people allow them to do it, they get away with it, but Roberts Rules don't allow for that. Somebody can't just stop the debate without having the body to stop the debate as a deliberative act, and not because somebody is tired of hearing the debate on something that perhaps doesn't interest them as much or that they don't support. So again, you can't just say, I'll call the question, as a means of bringing it into the debate unilaterally. To call the question, first a member has to be recognized, they have to make a motion to call the question, it does require a second, and it requires a two-thirds vote. Why? Because that's to protect minority rights on the board. You need a two-thirds vote because Roberts Rules has a bias in favor of making sure that everyone is heard, and that is why, to call the question, you need a two-thirds vote to cut off that discussion. If it passes, however, the body has to move on by rule without further discussion, so that's when it comes to a So that's when it comes to an act. Rules of decorum. The board member who's made the motion usually has the opportunity to speak first, if they wish to. They can defer to others to speak if they don't wish to begin that discussion. A member who has seconded the motion doesn't have any such entitlement, though, they could be heard at any time. So the party making the motion really is the one that has the privilege, under Roberts' Rules, of speaking their piece on why it is they're making that motion, and what they're encouraging of the board to do. Also, again, to make sure everyone is heard, a member of the body can only speak a second time, at least technically, after everyone has had a chance to be heard. So, the goal of the process is to make sure that all board members have an opportunity to be heard on the subject at hand. That debate, by the way, does have to be limited to this specific motion at hand. And that's as much a Roberts' Rules issue as it is also an open-meeting law issue. Because when the motion is germane to the agenda, then that motion is within the framework of the notice that's been given to the public for your meeting, and the notice that everyone has made decisions about whether they want to watch the meeting or come to the meeting for. And when, during the course of debate on a motion, perhaps a speech strays into another area, that's not germane to the question. We also run the risk that the board will start debating something that is not properly before the board, under the open-meetings law, as well as under Roberts' Rules. That's a different kind of problem, of course, to have. And if that debate ensues and keeps going, one thing that is, another myth that I should shatter, sometimes you'll hear people say, "Not at this board," but in other places, they'll say, "Oh, we don't have to worry about adding that, that's not an action item." So we can talk about that, because it's not on the agenda as an action item. Dead wrong, absolute myth. Discussion is part of a meeting, and it's part of what you give the public notice of. The public is not only entitled to watch you vote, they're also entitled to watch you at work and at debate. And for that reason, any discussion that makes it onto the agenda is something that has to define the scope of what's limited. Of course, remarks have to be courteous and avoid personal attacks. I can tell you, in my experience, having been around this state for a number of years, that I continue to admire the temperament, the mentality, and the spirit of this school board, which is consistently among the most collegial you're going to find, and among the most other-regarding in terms of listening to what others have to say. This board is good about making sure to obey the rules of boardsmanship. And so you should be aware you do well in that department, and that there are folks who aren't so lucky. So, it's something that you should definitely understand, that you really get noticed, I think, when people watch what you do. Certainly, I do, and I've been around the block a few times. Putting a question before the body, of course, as I indicated, the chair asks for a vote once something has been fully debated. And the wording the chair uses when putting the question to a vote is final, or it's supposed to be, under Roberts' Rules, and that wording is what should be recorded in the minutes. So that's another reason that a premium is placed on circulating the vote through a rule called "voting," because the way the motion is phrased is what's going to have to go into the minutes as either passed or defeated, and what the vote was. And there is also, one thing about the open-meeting law that relates to closed-session minutes, is we have that roll-call vote before going into a closed session. Part of the reason for that is, under state law, everyone needed to vote on going into closed, so that if an individual board member took the position, excuse me, took the position that, "I don't think we should be going into closed, and I don't want to take on the personal liability of going into closed session," because that's how the attorney general deals with it. It's not a taxpayer liability, it's an individual board member liability. And if I don't think something should be in closed session, I want to be able to vote against it going into closed session. Even if I think we should talk about that subject, I don't think closed session is the right place to do it. That's why state law enshrines that vote before people go into closed sessions, so that everybody's position on whether that motion to go into closed is proper, under the laws, is recorded. You can do by voice vote, you can do it by a show of hands, and as I said, the presiding officer generally has the authority to ask for a roll-call vote, and that roll-call vote is really effectively required to go into closed session. I should say, the statute doesn't say, at the beginning, that a roll-call vote must be taken to go into closed session. It says that you have to take a vote so that the vote of each individual member can be ascertained, for the reasons I indicated. Technically speaking, if you have board minutes with seven members all in attendance, and there's a unanimous voice vote to go into closed session, technically, under the language of that statute, I believe somebody could be successfully defended, but it's never my recommendation that you do it that way. I always recommend that the roll-call vote be taken. We don't like to have to get out on a limb unless we actually have to, so that's the reason for that. Abstentions. Voting members of the board can do abstain, and abstention is something that is normally done in the discretion, and according to the conscience of each individual board member. There are certain matters where one could make the case that an individual board member has a legal duty to abstain. That duty would never be captured by Roberts' Rules, and frankly, state statutes, at times, can nullify that duty by a separate requirement that I'll get into in a minute. But there are responsibilities that can make voting on a particular matter, or even debating a particular matter problematic for an individual board member. The two most notable are the ones I've listed here. 19.59 and subsequent subsections is the Code of Ethics for Local Public Officials. Under the law, individuals have a duty to refrain from voting on matters where they might realize a substantial financial gain from it. And the statute, of course, prohibits individuals from voting in ways or casting votes that are calculated to render anything of substantial value, according to the statute, to that individual member. You also have what is commonly referred to as the Conflict of Interest statute. That's a criminal statute, and that has to do with voting on contracts in which the board member has an interest in that contract. The statute provides that interest has to be $15,000 or more. So the way it works, in terms of making sure every last corner is pinned down, is the criminal statute makes it a crime to vote in one's own contract for $15,000 or more, and the Code of Ethics for Local Public Officials picks up everything from $14,999 all the way down to a cup of coffee, maybe. Well, at today's price is a cup of coffee, but it's probably not okay. But, something else that's cheap, you might get away with being able to buy somebody one of these, maybe, and that might not be unethical. But pretty much, anything else that's going to hit that thing of substantial value for purposes of the statutory test. Then we get into situations where someone has a legal duty to abstain, and has to exercise their discretion to decide, "Well, am I going to vote on this or not?" General, if it's appropriate or required to abstain from voting, it's also preferable or effectively required to refrain from participation in discussion. The reason for that, of course, is discussion is intended to influence voting. Debate is intended to influence other board members and persuade them to see the issue the way the speaking board member does. It won't do ethically for a board member to spend an entire discussion period trying to talk other people into voting for something they have a financial interest in, and then only bowing out when a vote is taken. Our code won't allow for that. So generally speaking, if it's something a board member really feels they need to abstain from voting on, chances are, they should probably abstain from discussing it as well. There's even an Attorney General informal letter, if I remember correctly, where the Attorney General pointed out, "There may even be instances when an individual needs to leave the room because their presence and eye contact could be deemed manipulative, and therefore, they shouldn't be present when that discussion takes place." But here's that exception I mentioned before, that's very important and very cumbersome under our law, and so we have to work hard to deal with problems that come up in this area. Under state law, no school board member can be barred from participating in or excluded from voting on a matter. There's a statute on this, that says, "No board member can be barred from participating in the board's vote." That includes closed sessions. So, for example, if something is being taken up in closed session, and other board members feel that a particular board member has a conflict and shouldn't participate, they can persuade, they can say, "Really, think about it, you shouldn't be in here for this conversation, you've got a direct interest in it." But at the end of the day, that individual board member is gonna have to decide if they're gonna break the law or not, if they're gonna participate in that discussion. And the statute, 19.89, makes absolutely clear that that is the case. I think, really, what you have there is the legislature taking the view that, if somebody is going to stop an elected official from voting, we want it to be the voters. We don't want to have legislation that basically enables school boards to ostracize one of their own members and essentially neutralize the vote of everybody who put that individual in office. So it's a clear preference, on the part of our legislature, for supporting votes that have been cast, at occasionally the risk that an individual may break the rules and then face the consequences. Now, for the most part, violations of the Code of Ethics, violations of the Conflict of Interest law, those are both things that there's individual liability, and that doesn't stick to anyone else. But there can be situations where it does. For example, when due process is at stake. Now, to open up, due process is only something the board has to afford when an individual whose rights are being adjudicated by the board either involve a property interest or a liberty interest. A property interest, for example, is if an individual has a contract for a limited term of employment. So if an individual has an employment contract with the board that runs from July 1 of 2025 to June 30 of 2026, that's what we call a term employment contract. That individual has an expectation that they will have a job for one year. That creates a property interest where due process has to be afforded before that property interest can be cut asunder. The same is true for liberty interests. Liberty interests are a little different. If somebody has been accused, for example, of scandalous behavior, crimes of moral turpitude usually are on the leading edge of scandalous behavior. When those kinds of allegations are floating around about an individual, and the board is in a position where it can be assigned an obligation to allow that individual to clear their name, and by the way, the board doesn't have that obligation any time people in the wider community say such things. But if, in fact, that is what is before the board and being considered, an individual may have a right to due process before the board acts, because of the fact that individual has a liberty interest under our Constitution in having the opportunity to clear their good name. That's how we look at it. Property interest, an interest in something proprietary that needs to be vindicated. Liberty interest, an interest in your own reputation and good name. But, this unfortunately is an area where it can stick to the rest of us, so to speak. If you have an individual who is biased under our standards, but insists under their rights under 1989 of our statutes to remain in the discussion and vote, you can have a due process violation that is attributable to one person. And there, of course, are cases that debate endlessly, when it's only one person, does that mean that the entire board has to absorb, essentially, the liability of violating that individual's due process rights? Or is that vote an insignificant vote that can be flitched off because other unbiased board members were unanimous in their decision? We have all kinds of fact patterns that swirl around this issue in our courts. But of course, you don't want to be in court, and have those issues be things that are debated about your board. So, of course, the goal is always to persuade an individual who has an interest to recuse themselves, to try to not have them participate in the discussion where, in your good judgment, they have an interest that should not be something that they continue to pursue. The standard for bias is very strong. When we have individual elected school board members, I like to think that judges are kind of at one end of the spectrum. Under our judicial code, if the judge even knows one of the parties, they're going to probably have to recuse themselves. That isn't anywhere near the standard for impartiality for an elected school board. School board members are entitled to know the people involved, they're entitled to know their community and understand its members. They're entitled to know people who work in the schools, and they have opinions about people in the schools. You're entitled to have all those things and bring that knowledge base to the table, and that doesn't violate anybody's due process rights. There are standards, they're not very demanding, but they do exist, and here's what they are. First of all, a board member can remain seated unless they've been a target of personal abuse at the hands of somebody appearing before the board. Now, our Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals took that one of two standards. I put in a third, because I think there's a third that the courts don't tell us about, but I think it's still there, so I mention it. It's actually a two-part standard of items A and B. If they've been a target of personal abuse, then that individual shouldn't be judging somebody who has been their abuser, so to speak. But, our Seventh Circuit had a case involving a superintendent of schools who was not renewed by the school board that employed her. And her defense, and her claim, was that, "I should not have to have my non-renewal hearing before the school board, even though the statute says that's where it is. I should be entitled to an independent hearing officer." Why? Because I have been personally abusing all the board members in the press, and that should get me an independent hearing officer, because they've been a target of personal abuse. Our Seventh Circuit Court of Appeals made short work of that argument, and said, "We're not going to license individuals to start taking after the board who by statute should be judging the case, just because they were strategically and tactically wise enough to start throwing mud at their own judges." That won't disqualify a school board, it has to be something that is more remote than that. A financial interest in the outcome is the other one. You can go back through Board of Regents versus Roth, you can go through DeLuca versus Common Counsel, our entire body of jurisprudence. Those two things are really the standards for somebody to be an impartial decision-maker when we're dealing with school board members judging matters that come before them. And that's why I always remind board members, when often they're concerned about making sure to do the right thing, just remember, you are an impartial decision-maker unless one of these two things are true. The third one that I've listed is something that I think comes out in our legal literature, and it still counts, and that is people who have their mind made up when they show up. If you're not willing to consider or listen to the evidence, and you've shown up with your mind already made up on the matter before you, where you owe due process, of course, to an individual before you, which is not always the case, but where it is, I think that's also a standard our courts have recognized. But again, you have broad flexibility as school board members to use your own judgment and conscience about whether these standards are met, and have a much- and conscience about whether these standards are met and have a much broader latitude than a number of other officials for purposes of defining what means impartial and what does not. The whole system here is geared toward, we want to have citizen boards, we want to have individuals in touch with their staff, with their faculty, with their community, and we want to recognize that by having standards that are realistic for that kind of situation. So that's how it's been handled so far. Voting results, again, under Roberts' Rules. Immediately before voting, the chair will announce the result, including the following: reported the voting itself, statement if the motion has been adopted or lost, and a statement describing the effect of the vote. That can be baked into a quick sentence or two, and usually that will be what your president will announce after a vote is taken to make sure that the minutes are recorded accurately about that. As a public school district, a particular vote can have significant implications or call for some recognition of staff, student, or citizens, and that's where I sometimes want to make sure that everyone understands some flexibility goes with your custom in that regard as well. So for example, there may be a call by an individual member to recognize that the forensics team did well at competition and raise that issue before the school board. There's certainly some allowance for that kind of communication without it being something that strict compliance and bringing it before the body is expected. Basic considerations about motions to amend, it's subsidiary, and it's meant to modify the wording of a particular motion, because again, Roberts' Rules places great premium on the phrasing of a motion because that is what will go in the minutes and that will be law. A motion to amend does not adopt the motion to be amended, only the modified wording of that motion. So if you propose an amendment to a motion, you're just trying to influence the way the motion is phrased. You're not necessarily, again, representing that you're going to vote for that motion, nor are you bound under Roberts' Rules to vote for that motion. Motion to amend generally takes precedence unless we have a privileged motion. So if somebody were to move to amend and then somebody were to move to recess because everybody has been in a meeting for two hours and needs to use the restroom, that's going to take precedence. And so the recess motion is going to come up first, and then after that, they take up the motion to amend the main motion. Motions to amend have to be seconded, they are always debatable, and in general, they can be amended under themselves. So theoretically, you can have a series of amendments that will apply to a motion just the way you see sometimes work in larger bodies such as congressional action where there'll be scores of amendments that people have to follow down to get the wording nailed down. It requires a simple majority vote, and it can be reconsidered. Delaying a motion. Motion to lay on the table is the commonly used phrase for that. I'll skip forward a little more quickly since I'm just about at my time. Steve, how much time do I have?
Yeah.
Doing fine?
Yeah.
Okay. Terrific. Motion to lay on the table is different from common parlance for motion to table. Motion to table really isn't a thing the way motion to lay on the table is under Roberts' Rules. That's used as a way of setting aside the main motion altogether, and a motion that's brought to essentially say, let's get this out of the way. Now, that includes a provision that the question can be taken up again by a decision of the majority. But if a motion to lay on the table passes, a motion has to be brought before the board and a majority of the board has to vote to get it back in front of the board, under Roberts' Rules. It's not appropriate to use a motion to lay on the table as a way of killing a motion. That's motion to table is sometimes talked about in common parlance as a way to kind of kill a motion that's presented. It doesn't really properly exist in that context. It's motion to lay on the table, and it temporarily suspends the body's consideration of something as long as the body doesn't choose to bring it back. It can be laid on the table for a meeting, it can be laid on the table for a lifetime. It's up to the governing body and a majority of that body to decide which is the case. Postpone are two types of subsidiary motions. A motion to postpone indefinitely, that can dispose of question without bringing it to a vote, effectively killing it. So if someone moves to postpone discussion indefinitely on a particular matter, that has the effect of killing the bill, so to speak. A motion to postpone to a certain time usually has very different motivations behind it in order to, for example, make sure that an absent board member can participate and vote on a matter presented. There might be a motion to postpone until the next meeting so that Mr. Doudna can be heard on the vote. So that would be an example of the reason for doing that. Either of those have to be seconded, they are debatable, and they require a majority vote. So as we have these subsidiary motions and amendments, those are all things that will require a second, and they can be debated. So you can even literally debate whether an amendment should be made to a particular motion before that amendment occurs. A motion to reconsider. We hear about those a lot because occasionally there'll be buyers remorse about something, or a board will get feedback from constituencies that don't like action that the board has taken or want the board to take it in a different way. That will be sometimes cause for a board to want to reconsider something it's done. Motion to reconsider allows you to reconsider a motion that's already passed. If it's come before the body, but there wasn't a formal motion to adopt it, it's not a motion to reconsider. It may be dealt with by some other mechanism, but not that one. A motion to reconsider is used generally, according to Roberts' Rules, to correct, we don't do these here, but to correct hasty, ill-advised, or erroneous action. That's what it's for, according to Roberts' Rules. Or, this can happen, I think more permissibly, to take into account new information or further developments since the original vote. And that can happen to anyone where we'll have new information or new developments, and it makes sense to talk about something all over again. Motion to reconsider suspends any action related to the original vote proposed for reconsideration. So if a vote passes to reconsider, that original motion and action taken by the board effectively is voided by that motion to reconsider, and now we've got a new round of voting on the same thing. Because a motion to reconsider doesn't change what's before the body, it just brings it back. So the old vote is thrown out, we've got the same question, however, that's before the board. A motion to reconsider can only be brought by a member who voted on the prevailing side of the original vote. So if a motion passed five-two, and a motion to reconsider is made at a subsequent meeting, that has to come from one of the board members who are part of the five. And that is, again, another reason why you've developed a custom here of doing roll call votes, because when you get into the weeds on Roberts' Rules, there are so many times we have to identify who did what, and roll call voting is the best way for us to be able to do that in hindsight. And that's what we have to do when there's a vote to reconsider. Someone from the prevailing side has to bring that motion. In addition, Roberts' Rules holds that a motion to reconsider can only be raised when no other business is before the body. So a board can't vote on a matter that's not on the meeting agenda, or the meeting notice, as it's called by statute. So reconsiderations has to be put on the agenda to be taken up under state law. A lot of times, that gets missed. There's some, in some quarters, there's some belief that there's a privilege to bring a motion to reconsider when it's not on the agenda, when it's not part of the notice of the meeting. That's not true. The public has an absolute right to know if you're going to talk about reconsidering what you did, just as it has a right to see and talk about what you did. So it's important to make sure that if somebody's going to bring a motion to reconsider, that good faith applied. There should be communication with the presiding officer that there's an intent to bring a motion to reconsider, and through the normal agenda-setting process, there should be a pursuit, however, you know, frankly, I know that's handled by your superintendent and board president by kind of longstanding practice, but in this example, somebody who voted with the majority would have to go to those individuals if it isn't the president himself and say, I want to bring this before the board, and I'd like this to be on the agenda, so everybody looking at your meeting notice knows that you're going to take up that issue. That may be very important to any number of constituencies to see what the board does when it has a chance to reconsider something. So it does have to get on the agenda. Roberts' Rules is never an excuse to violate the open meetings law, and in fact, my tendency is to say, the open meetings law comes first. Roberts' Rules, for us, in the way that you've applied it, in the way that you've written it into your policy, is the guiding light for your school board meetings. But failure to follow it doesn't invalidate your action, and following the open meeting law in order to comply with the law, even at the expense of minor technical issue under Roberts' Rules, is absolutely the right choice to make. Better that the public is made aware of your discussions and votes that are going to come before the board, then the public doesn't know anything about the reconsideration because of some belief that we're only reconsidering it and therefore it's kind of already here. It isn't here if it's not on the notice of meeting, under 1984 of the statute. Period, full stop. And that's true in other circumstances as well. Motion to reconsider, I mentioned, it only can happen when there's no other business before the body, and catchhalls can't be used because those also can violate the open meetings law. So bringing a motion to reconsider under some sort of general new business heading, that's not going to be compliant with the open meetings law either. So again, we need to make sure that that's given priority, and I know in our discussions we always do. That really concludes the Roberts' Rules part of the discussion, and tried to flavor it a little bit with discussion about the open meetings law and a few other things that might matter to you. But as I say, you've always done an outstanding job in working together and bringing things before the body in a way that makes sense to the membership and certainly does good for constituents as well. You see a lot of activity around the state, and you know, I'm pleased to share that I think this board always has a very high level of performance and very functional relations in terms of how they interact at board meetings. So you do a great job with it, and these are kind of the tools, I think, that underscore that work and occasionally can provide a reference point for you in case there are questions. Does anyone have any questions for me? This is why a motion to adjourn takes precedence, by the way. All right. Well, if you ever have any questions about this, of course, you know how to find me, and we'll be sure to answer them for you so that you get the information you need. So again, thanks for having us as part of this program too, Steve and Board President Aaron, I really appreciate that. So thank you again.
Thank you.
Thank you.
What are you doing?
Sitting here.
All right. On today's items, the new policy, 5411, third grade promotion, second reading.
Okay, so as I mentioned earlier, this was brought to the board for information. At our last board meeting, we had a spot earlier in our agenda this evening for the public to weigh in, their comments on this policy. There was no one that brought any, but this is an opportunity now for the third and fourth part, discussion and consideration, and then ultimately a final vote on whether to adopt or not adopt this policy. Again, this is a policy that was created mostly through NEOLA as a result of the Act 20. And it's left unchanged from the last time you saw it and from the creative committee. Always we'd be looking for a motion to adopt this policy with the recommendation of the committee.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt policy 5411, third grade promotion and retention as presented effective immediately?
I'll make that motion.
Motion made by Mrs. Sherb. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Thompson. Discussion? Ms. Troxell?
Aye.
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 All right. I'll make a motion to move into closed session pursuant to Wisconsin statutes 19.851E and J under 19.851E to deliberate or negotiate the purchase of public property for the potential expansion of alternative education options within the district, and under 19.851F to consider information that is required by state or federal law to remain confidential, including people records protected under Wisconsin statutes 118.125 specifically related to student enrollment status and educational placement matters. The board may take action in closed session if necessary and appropriate. At the conclusion of the closed session, the board will entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Miller. Discussion? Aye.
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 Thank you.